I don't think you know.
Randy.
All right, everyone. The calendar tells me it's Tuesday, September ninth, 2025. And so that means we're here for the monthly work session of the Athens Clark County Mayor Commission. And on these work sessions, we have some items for future consideration where we don't receive a presentation, but we've got an opportunity for Commissioner questions. We have three of those items. And then we have two items for future consideration where we will receive an uninterrupted presentation by a senior member of our staff that will be followed by questions and conversation. Again, three items for future consideration. The first one of these is the Sycamore Drive Pedestrian Improvement Preliminary Design. So we in the public have received a presentation around this. Any questions about that? Mr. Myers?
I just wanted a review of Slide 16 of the alternatives. And if, you know, just to hear how staff highlights or doesn't highlight one, because we have to choose one, right? Or someone has to choose one. You guys are, whoever's talking, I'll let you get to that.
Josh Hawkins from our Capital Projects team with us. See Slide 16, you want to go to.
It's the one with the three alternative options. And then.
We can.
Twenty six.
Yeah.
There, right there. So you don't have to select one of these. These are three alternates instead of, you know, what's being presented as the preliminary plan.
Okay, these are alternates to.
These are alternates to what's being presented in the in the previous slides.
So these were non-selected, right?
This was if you want to do something different.
Could you, could you then, I mean, I looked through this briefly here. Just like if you were going to give me the box on the left, the one that we are picking, what would it say?
Yeah. So keep in mind, we're being mindful of property acquisition here on all of these.
Right.
So time and money. Looking at the left-hand column, the one top kind of says, we're going to try to avoid any impact on different light way at all and kind of rebuild the road and.
Install new.
And install new roads, new curb and gutter, and new sidewalk, all the way down. So that's more money, more time to to design it. The second one is putting the sidewalk on the other side of the road. So if you know the existing condition, the side on kind of the north, the north side.
And so you're going down Sycamore from Atlanta Highway. The north is a right, south is a left.
Yep. And there's some terrain that kind of slopes. There's some really interesting terrain in there that kind of slopes up. So that creates some challenging conditions on installing the sidewalk on the north side, requiring some retaining walls. And then the, and there's some other challenges with the north side as well as when we selected the south side. And then the third one is kind of a blend in that we're on the north side from Atlanta Highway down Riverside, and on the south side from Riverside all the way down to the coast.
So is the recommended one that would be at the, the one that's not on there, right, would be.
Recommended one is on the south side all the way up and down.
With no, no new curb and gutter drainage.
There's curb and curb and gutter.
Oh, there is on that. Okay, great.
But without kind of impeding the word that I guess.
Correct.
Okay.
And I know that Commissioner, there's the guy who gets Sycamore, Sycamore and stuff. But.
Not mine, just.
I think this is Commissioner Cole.
Oh, this is Cole. Well, he's not here to answer the question, so.
But be, you know, retavening.
Yeah, I know exactly. I just thought it was, um. Oh, I thought that was yours. Oh, okay. Okay. Commissioner, right, correct me. Thank you.
Any other questions on Sycamore? Fun fact for you history buffs, this used to be one of the westward routes out of town. Come to the river, there used to be.
Right there.
So this is long before the West Broadway and Highway Bridge.
Yeah.
Moving on, East Plus 2023, Project 17 is the Stonehenge Neighborhood Improvement Project Concept. So questions about that? Or Commissioner Johnson, is that team interested in this? Questions about this one?
Where you hear the presentation?
No questions. It's just questions only.
Oh, not my big question. No, no questions yet.
Any others? All right. And then the big kahuna of our items for future consideration, the East Plus 2026 Recommended Candidate Project List. And we're fortunate to have Alex Ham.
Yes, yes. So I do understand meeting before and having questions prepared, but I shouldn't be the only one that have questions. The thing, the presentation is necessary for the public, though. No presentation will be.
It's online, so they can look at it, but we don't, we're not walking.
But we should discuss with each other, not necessarily have questions. Maybe one has a question for another one. It should be your public forum where discussion is made.
So.
Where do we do that?
About a year ago, we transitioned to format of work sessions. So some items that we don't get a presentation on, but that you can ask questions about if you have a question about it.
Commissioner Johnson. Well, I do, and I think we should, and I think that's important. But we have an obligation to the public for to do a pre to publicly discuss the information, not necessarily have questions about the information. And I understand the change to the format. I'm not saying I agree or disagree. I, well, I am saying I disagree with the format. The public voted you in, voted you in, voted you in, voted you in. The format is a format. I hear what you're saying. I don't, I don't.
I wasn't going to say that. I was, what I was going to tell you was that in my memory, it was done, it wasn't something like.
I'm not asking about a procedural question. No, you interrupted me. I'm not asking about a procedural question.
No, no, I'm just telling you the process. I am only saying. I'd be happy to have the presentation, Stephanie. I'm just saying some of the colleagues thought the work sessions were going too long. That's why.
Too long. Because we get our information, we were getting our information late. But it's not, they should not, the public should not suffer because we, they go too long because we have questions at during the meeting.
So is a public process question that this is then on the website since noon on Friday? And so.
You're expecting people to do the reading on their own and interpret what we're trying to say?
Let me clarify something. T-SLOSS project, correct? So there are more layers of public input that will be going through this.
That's right. And of course, the approval goes through a regular.
For public input. This is the initial.
You can bring a man off the field. Time out.
Body, bring off the offer our initial evaluation.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
So the question is, does anybody have any questions or comments or observations that they'd like to make about the presentation?
I have, I have a couple of presentations. I've read the presentation. The, so we have all these TADS. I know. Well, I'm getting somewhere with this. We have all these TADS that will be putting public funds into some particular areas where we also have these loss projects in those TAD areas appearing on this list. I'm just, I'm kind of curious about some evaluation as to whether there's overlap on there, because I kind of wonder if we could reallocate some fund from some projects to projects that didn't make the list because there are TAD opportunities, TAD funding opportunities in some of those. Does that make sense?
So Alex, I mean, the committee discussion or Josh, that was a staff level observation of these projects.
We're on the T-SLOSS.
Oh, we are prepared. Okay, we are.
Yes. And I remember that comment from the work session we had last time. We did have some information that's in the presentation that we have for you for free.
Okay.
And I can give you, I can give you some comments, just.
Yeah, I mean, preliminarily, that would be awesome. And those of us who do our homework could read it and, you know.
There is some potential overlap. We've identified some areas and we can get that. I'm sorry.
Allison and Avita. And I'll get Carol.
I can tell you.
So your addresses are okay. Yeah. I will tell you as Chair of the T-SLOSS 26, we stayed
out of the weeds of overlap and concentrated on good projects. And so that's important for, I guess, the alternate. We did not do the peeling off of that. Because that's deeper than our committee was going to be able to do.
Yeah, I just want to say, you know, to my colleagues, be mindful of TADS that are in our districts and where there might be overlap so we can have a fruitful discussion of where best allocate this money toward topics that do not have alternate opportunity for funding. Everybody, I'll be paying attention to that. So when we get into our retreat discussion, maybe.
And what might even be helpful, and I don't know if staff can generate this relatively easily, is if you overlay the map that's in this presentation with the map of TADS.
Mr. Myers requested last.
Your question.
Well, you almost covered everything I wanted to say. Almost. I do like the mapping overlap and designation, but I think it could be simplified a little bit with that to have the projects that are listed, an asterisk or some designation that says in TAD such and such. So that way, because often we're looking at different funding sources and it does stand out when something, this could be its only funding source versus combined with ours. So it's feedback. And I do like the idea of the visual as well.
I mean, the TADS might get us to completion of some of these projects, especially when trusted.
Certainly. I mean, like we found with safety, it's a drive, you know, if we can only do a partial project with T-SLOSS and do a complete project with T-SLOSS and obviously that benefit.
Yes, I guess I want to just kind of tap into it because I do hope that, I think the manager mentioned about how they were going to kind of change our process of the SLOSS, kind of kind of whittling it down. I do think that one of the handicaps for 2026, commend the work now. So it's not commend the work, was that they didn't eat, they did not have what was already being allocated to another front. I think it might have changed some of the conversation. So catching this now is better than not catching it at all with the overlays or the asterisks, or how do you want to identify where projects are? Because I do think it was a, and I'm not getting away from Stephanie's comments. I'm just saying that as we move forward, trying to not duplicate some of the things that have already been funded and moving pieces, we can do that. We're the commission. We can, we can, we can do and fit things where they, where they need to go at. And I think when people volunteer and don't have that information, it kind of leaves them down. And, but I look forward to how we're going to move forward. So.
And I guess just sort of extending your question, Avita, this would be to Alex, you know, was the committee pretty conscious of prior funded projects, even if they haven't materialized on the ground yet? Was that part of the conversation?
Primarily, no. Primarily, that's important to know, is again, good projects that were needed as we saw. We, it probably wouldn't have been even reasonable for us to go back and study every single SLOSS that has every dollar that's already been spent and not for a volunteer committee. I can't imagine that load going on top of it. So as we did, we just, if these projects look good economically as well, well, primarily isn't a good project for the community. So we sort of stayed in our tight lane there.
And so I guess then Josh, kind of bringing it to the staff level, you know, as you guys filter these projects and saw them presented to the committee and then moderate committee conversation, kind of was there some staff level sense like, oh, well, on the Atlanta Highway, we can extend where we've already started? You talked a little bit about that?
Certainly. So, well, it is important to remember that part of the advisory committee was like, but it is reviewing the applications that were submitted via the public process. One of the point that you all asked the advisory committee to look for, though, is either continuation or some, you know, continuation of existing project or, yeah, I think that's what, I think that was one of the things that we asked to look for. So that that would ask for some awareness of what sorts of projects were existing, were already on the books. And in each submission, what you would find is the applicant kind of articulated in there, hey, this is linked with other existing project, or this is a continuation of one that exists. So that would have been in the application, you know, if each member, you know, if they have them to kind of consume that. So there was awareness at that level. In the content of the application, the applicant said whether or not there was continuation or.
About this, Alex, I guess this brings committee members' iteration down to something like 1910 minimum wage.
Yes.
Volume of work, your volunteers, somewhere in that.
Carol. Yeah, we are going to be discussing this at our retreat at the end of next week, correct? So hopefully then we'll also have that, that the projects here in their geographical locations overlapped with the previous ones. I want to make sure to add on, I mean, that was T-SLOSS 2018 and 2023. However, I think it's really important to look at the SLOSS 2011 because there were a bunch of transportation has. So if we could include the transportation projects from SLOSS 2011 so that we see the broad distribution on that. And again, I'm appreciative of what we got from the advisory committee and will work with this. Well, we do hope we'll have more on the pre-designated ones so that we can value, start valuing what's in the projects rather than say, oh, those are just a name and let's put some other ones on there that were on the list from the public or the, the ones that the committee reviewed. So I want to have some substance to the pre-designated ones so that we can make more thoughtful decisions for future expenses.
Observations or conversation?
I think Patrick's hands been up.
Yeah, this is our question for the dirt road. Last year, two years ago, we did a dirt road, dirt road policy. And I'm just wondering where we all get smaller, those two roads that we created by the stew. And $6 million will be, will do a lot of, will go a long way. We still follow that. We passed like a one, two, three, the top priority. If this passes, we still follow that procedure of making sure that.
So usually Ronnie could give an update on this, but with dirt roads, we've got 10 that were on the list to be studied, kind of conceptually designed, and then talking to each of the affected property owners about quit claiming the right of way needs form. So we've got all of that happening right now. We're working on the right of way acquisition. And I think we've got money to do two. And then. Mission Drive, the other one? Anyway, and then the, and then the rest of them are waiting on capital funds from whatever the next steps is going to be.
Yeah, and which mark these complete now?
That one's.
So, so I guess my next question, what is that new title that we came up with? Okay, NTMP?
Workover Traffic Management Program?
Residential. We changed it from neighborhood to residential.
Oh, okay.
So I think that is, I think that's going to be another bullet point you need to look at too when it comes to paving the streets because we, the LRC folk, LRC, we, that's what. Yeah, yeah. So that's another piece that needs to be looked at when you're doing these layers, that there are already some streets and stuffs that are on the list to be taken care of. And I do know that, I didn't know Mission Drive is already on.
On the dirt road list.
Yeah. Okay.
Any other T-SLOSS 26 questions? Remind us, if you will, of not kind of putting up any benchmarks, Josh, in terms of commission vote and then.
Sure, very good. All right. So next would be some deliberation on how we produce a final project list. Before we can put this question on the ballot, three things we need to produce. One is a final project list. Two is an intergovernmental agreement with Cinderella and Bogart. And third is a resolution that brings all that together and asks the Board of Elections to put that on the ballot. We hope that by the December vote, we're able to put together a final project list, which takes the committee's work. It takes, you know, anything that you designated back last November, kind of blends them and whatever edits you want to make to those two lists and puts them together in a final project list. The intergovernmental agreement would call for a statutory requirement for us to get together with Cinderella and Bogart, go over their lists, our lists, and all that would be put together in the, in the resolution. Again, hopefully ready by the December vote. And, you know, potentially given the holiday season and how December's typically go, you know, that that wouldn't be the deadline, you know, if we're looking at it, February would kind of be the very last time that we would have to put that on the May ballot. And then May 19th, which would be the, I think it's like 19th, I can't remember the exact date. But the May ballot is where the question presented to the voters.
So the February is the, the deadline.
Deadline.
To make it to the ballot in May. That's, and then the, and the Board of Elections, Board of Elections receiving it is the, is supposedly just a one meeting receiving.
Turn around and issue the call and publish, you know, all the, all their statutory.
Okay. And that's true. Okay. Because I think that's key there.
And judge puts together all that language, just to make sure that this is kind of sufficient to the flexibility that we want and the outcome.
Okay. I got one question.
Yeah.
And as Director for Stephen, I know that we had the actual printout of those streets that are on the Residential Traffic Management Program. But could you send that back out? Again, a list of all of those?
Sure.
The RTM is on the pre-designated list as well.
Okay.
And I wanted to say we do have a draft with a map that you requested as well.
Okay, definitely.
And the SLOSS 2021, it's transportation.
As this is coming forward, before the retreat, we will have the specifics of the pre-designated list.
All right. More conversation about this next week and we'll get some more material. Alex, I just want to thank you and everybody who spent many, many, many evenings, one evening with them. And I'm glad it was just.
It's our pleasure.
Thank you, Alex.
All right, y'all, we're gonna move on to those two items for future consideration that we have. We're gonna hear First Division Zero Safety Action Plan update from Stephen Bailey at Transportation Public Works. You're joined by.
Courtney Frisch with ACOM. And I'm gonna give a brief introduction for this. I know we've got a lot to get, a lot of information to get through in 10 minutes. But I've got our transportation planning staff and ACOM team here provided an update on our action plan. And you'll remember that's funded through a U.S. Department of Transportation Safe Streets for All Grants that we were awarded previously. So we're going to give an update on public engagement, some of the data collection and analysis that we've done so far, and then the overall plan development that's taking place. And we'll talk about some next steps. Also point out some opportunities where you can see some of the work in action over the next few months with a few of the pilot safety projects that we've got going on. And then open it up for questions after that. So I will turn it over to Courtney and then Brian.
I don't know. Behind you for.
He's really big.
How's that?
Looking at it. Thank you all. It's great to be here. We have a lot to pepper. I'm gonna go from the beginning. My colleague Brian will step in for a little bit and I'll close it. And so our agenda for today is popping up. We'll run through this anyways. I'm really staying on this slide for time. So want to get into the project background. Stephen has already mentioned a lot of it. This is a federal grant that ACC did receive. The funds were awarded in January 2023. But I think the really cool thing about this grant opportunity is it's safe streets and roads for all. So in addition to looking at vulnerable road users, this gives us the opportunity to look at how do we improve safety for motorists and vehicles, which sometimes we don't always get that opportunity in some other. So why SS4A? So just giving you all the statistics of what has happened in the county over the past few years. On average, there's 13 traffic-related fatalities and 57 serious injuries. So this would be something that's life-changing, such as losing a limb. 2021 had the record year for the number of fatalities. In 2022, y'all did adopt a Vision Zero Resolution to eliminate traffic-related fatalities and serious injuries by 2037. And then just want to point out the statistics we have thus far this year. So far, we've had six fatal crashes, although in those six crashes, we have had seven fatalities and five of those being pedestrians. So what's our desired outcome? Well, we want to make sure we can achieve the Vision Zero by 2037. And there are a number of ways that we can do this, but what's under TPW purview is really to look at safer roads, safer speeds, and then safer road users. And again, safer road users is inclusive of everybody. Right? So moving on to our safety action plan components, I would actually say that ACC has gone above and beyond to what the SS4A requirements are. You can see some of the things like the Safety Action Plan Committee, of course, public and stakeholder engagement, developing a high injury network. Those are things that are very common of SS4A. ACC has gone above and beyond to include near miss technology, to have these quick build projects, and then a number of safety action plan reports that we've provided, looking at quick build, specifically looking at sidewalk bicycle gap framework for prioritization, speed management policies, and ADA transition. Okay, so just to give you all some updates on our community engagement, we've had two rounds of community engagement, the first being in fall and winter of 2024, 2025. We hosted two pop-up events, one at the Sheriff's Ball Festival and one at the App Fest Half Expo. We also deployed our first survey and we held nine focus groups, an in-person one with staff, and then two for each of the, those listed above. So for survey one, this was really to get us to identify the problem. I think pretty much we all understood what the problem was, but just as a part of the planning process, we really needed to document that. We had 255 responses and some of the key themes that we've heard are looking for educational programs for those moving into Athens Clark County every year, such as our UGA students. And then also making sure that we have given enough attention to vulnerable road users. There is also an interactive map, which you can see, these are the responses from the survey where people have identified specific locations that that they wanted us to know. Then this past spring, and some of our second round of community engagement, so we were at the Juneteenth Festival. We also did a pop-up at the Transit Multimodal Center. We deployed survey number two. And then we held two additional focus groups, a follow-up with ACC staff, and then a more specific focus group with the transit operators. This was something that came out of our pop-up at the multimodal center. We got some good feedback from the patrons. However, we realized that the operators are really our experts on the road. So we really wanted to hear from them where they saw safety issues and what improvements might be desired.
And how many?
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I can't wait to.
So survey two, that was open for a bit longer. Um, so survey two, that was open for a bit longer. We wanted to really try to get some more responses, which we did, we got 450 responses. And this was helping us to identify our solution, so really trying to get some countermeasures in front of the community, see what they prefer, what they didn't, start to look at how we would prioritize projects and recommendations. We presented our, our high injury network to get feedback on that. And then as well, we had this interactive map and this word cloud really, really highlights the key corridors that we've heard a lot of through both surveys, but particularly survey number two. I'm gonna pass it off to Brian, he's gonna talk about the high injury network and our crash data.
Okay, yeah, thank you all. As Courtney mentioned, you know, this is, this, this plan is based on the data. The crash data comes from the actual police reports, so this is from on-the-ground data. And as you can see here, there, there were over the last six years, we studied from 2019 through 2024, there were about an average of 13 fatal and 57 serious injury crashes each year over that period. You see, there was a bit of a dip there around, I guess, a tail end of COVID, but it stayed stubbornly high over the six-year period we studied. Um, as far as the types of crashes, so we want to understand, of course, you know, what, what the cause of crashes are. We can see that angle crashes comprise the largest portion and, and then combined with lane departure crashes, so those, those crashes where people are running off the road. Those, those two combined are, are the majority of crash hits, yes.
We go, so repeat angle crashes, what is it?
An angle crash would be, would be any time that, uh, it's not a head-on crash, it's not the front end of the front end, it could be a direct T-bone crash, or it could just be, you know, they, they strike each other literally at an angle, could be at a skewed intersection, it's not a side swipe crash, so they're not just rubbing up against each other. So it's, it's any other type of crash, it's an angle crash.
Can you remind me what FSI stands?
I'm sorry, fatal and serious injury.
Okay.
Could be on there, but, uh, that's what FSI stands for, fatal and serious injury. Then in terms of driver actions that were associated with the crashes, failure to yield was by far the, the, the most common driver action, followed by driver lost control and, uh, too fast for existing conditions was the majority of, of crash, crashes that resulted in a fatality or a serious injury. And then, you know, this slide really is to highlight that speed kills. So you can see here that the vast majority, about 55% of fatal serious injury crashes were on roads with speeds over 45 miles per hour. So important to know.
On the one, this is just a definition from the one before where it's a driver condition. What, what was that? What's driver condition? I mean, not DUI, because it's.
Uh, driver condition.
It's a top.
Driver condition, oh, that would be something, some, some ailment of the driver, some, some, something happening with the driver. It could be a number of things.
Could it be texting? With that?
No, usually that would be, that would be some, something happening with the driver.
Something.
Well, that's, it's gonna be varied, so I'd have to dig into the data, we can get you some follow-up.
Okay, it's fine.
Like, like a seizure or something.
Something like that.
Part of ten, progression.
So we developed the high injury network. Now, high injury network is the first step in, in trying to understand where we prioritize solutions. So we looked at both the crash history, you know, again, those 57 serious injury and 13 fatal crashes about every year. And we looked at where those were at the strongest concentration. We also looked at risk. We developed the model for risk by looking at the, the, the cause and context for crashes and applying those causes and contexts across the system. So if most crashes that were resulting in deaths or serious injuries were happening on four-lane roadway, we thought those was more risk, example, just as an example. So we, we, we developed this model that identified 128 roadway miles and 25 intersections as the most dangerous. And what I want to highlight here is that 85% of fatal and serious injury crashes occurred on only 18% of roadways in Athens Clark County, so that's pretty remarkable, yes.
Can you explain why the loop was excluded?
Yes, I was gonna be mad at you the next thing I mentioned, yes.
Sorry.
Loop kind of excluded because generally with these, the SS4A program, the Safe Streets and Roads for All program, and Vision Zero in general, we generally exclude interstate-type roadways because there are limits to what local agencies can do on those.
Absolutely, and that also keeps us in that 45 mile per hour roads.
Not necessar, not necessarily, I mean, some of the, some of them, some of them are 50, you still have roads that vary anywhere from 20 miles per hour to 50 miles per hour.
It's not higher, the higher is gonna be in highway.
Generally, the higher, those, those 65 and up are highways, yes.
But the injury rates, do they exclude the bypass?
They do, all of our data did exclude it. And another, another reason we did not look at Loop 10 is the type of safety measures. There are a few safety measures that we can deploy on, on, you know, a limited access roadway, but really out of the 84 that you'll hear that we have, there's, not all of them certainly can be deployed on that type of roadway network. And again, to Brian's point, there's just limited opportunity for, you know, Athens Clark County to really be able to implement the changes on that.
Right?
Yes.
No, just.
Okay, there's two other things that I want to highlight here. So while only 28% of, of the roadways in Athens Clark County are collectors or arterials, 95% of the high injury network is on collectors or arterials, so that's pretty notable. That, that's where the challenges are. And I want to stress too that this is not all GDOT roadways. So 59% of, of these roadways are, are local managed roadways. So there's a lot that can be done, a lot that can be done. So, you know, when we look at the data, we want to understand not just, did you have a question?
Yes.
Oh.
And I think it's for the mayor.
Yes.
And I'm already jumping in because everybody else has been jumping, so I'm jumping in. 106, is that a arterial or?
It, it's at least an arterial, yeah.
Okay.
I would expect, because you're drawing, you know, North Avenue becomes Daniels.
Yeah.
Yeah. Highway 106, State Road.
And we combine principal and minor arterials together, it's just arterial, so I don't have it fun of me, but I would imagine it'd be, you know, at least a minor arterial.
Thank you.
I know, good question. So when we were looking at the data, we wanted to understand, of course, not just what the problem was, but also, you know, what we can do about it. So we developed a, a series of countermeasures, a toolkit here. And what's key here is that, you know, we started with proven safety countermeasures. So the Federal Highway Administration has published a list of 28 proven safety countermeasures that have a track record of, of success. Now, we have built upon that because we do a lot of these projects around the country. We have developed that out to a list of, of over 80 proven safety countermeasures that are in four general categories that are the general categories that Federal Highway sort of divides theirs into, and that's intersection countermeasures, just general roadway segment countermeasures, bicycle pedestrian countermeasures, and speed management countermeasures. And so in the plan, for each of these countermeasures, we have identified not only a description of the countermeasure, but the, the effect it should have on crashes and, and injuries, fatality crashes, the general cost range per unit for the type of countermeasure, the timeframe in which it would be implemented, and I think really importantly, the context in which it would be implemented as well. So, you know, should this countermeasure be considered for urban areas, suburban areas, commercial areas, residential areas? We identify that for each of these, and we have all of that so that it will provide a toolkit by the end of the plan that can be referenced, you know, not only for these immediate projects that we identify in the plan, but going forward, you'll know if you have a situation in any local part of ACC, you'll include reference, okay, what types of countermeasures will work in that situation that should all be there.
So I just want to talk briefly about the next steps for the project. Um, one of the things that we are, are doing, as I mentioned earlier, is this near miss analysis. This is a really cool deployment of these AI sensors that we can put out into the, into the transportation network where we look at near misses. So we don't want to just capture where a crash occurs, but where it almost occurred and didn't, because that really does count for us. The cool thing about these sensors is they also collect a bunch of other data as well, so we can get speeds, we can get counts, we can get classifications of vehicles, so we can also get this additional data set of what is, what is happening on our roadways and at these intersections. We are just finalizing the locations of these with TPW. Another thing we will be doing is deploying some quick builds. So quick builds are these pilot projects, they're temporary installations where we set them out and remove them. We're gonna be using affordable materials, and the cool thing about these is we get to test the street design and then, most importantly, get feedback. And then if we need to or want to, can alter, improvise, you know, either within that pilot or, you know, after the conclusion of it. We do have a, a couple of locations that we are considering. One of those locations, you can see here on the bottom left picture, it's Danielsville Road and Isla Road. You can see this Y intersection, which already is an unsafe situation, it's not perpendicular, so it does kind of reduce some visibility for drivers. In addition to it being Y, there's this extra leg of an intersection that can cause some confusion. So one thing we're suggesting is to temporarily do some realignment with some paint and cones and whatnot to remove that extra Y.
Got all the angles there.
All the angles.
Um, there are a few.
Thank you.
We've really tried to look at a variety, of course, throughout the county, and then also, again, looking at ones that can also benefit drivers in addition to our vulnerable road users.
I jump in for that one specifically, Commissioner, I was gonna hope to reach out to you and see if we could maybe find a spot to have a community meeting out near this to kind of let.
That, call me, I got, you got.
Perfect, okay. There will be a NOPA forthcoming, and of course, there will be some public outreach for this. We anticipate having some sort of survey, survey or feedback on our project website where we can get the input from people who are using it. So just want to give you all a quick overview of the project schedule. Between now and October, we will be deploying the quick build pilots and the near miss technologies. We've already begun drafting the safety action plan, but that draft will come to TPW at the end of October. We will then finalize the plan in December. We would love to come back to you all sometime in February to actually present the recommendations. I imagine there'd be a lot of interest in that, and then anticipate acceptance of the safety action plan in March, next March. That's really all we have, so just want to say thank you, and then is the QR code for our project website and our contact information.
All right, any questions for, and Courtney, or Stephen, Patrick?
Thank you. Much, much needed. Quick build, so I get the concept of how to build, but some of our most troubling roads, if I got this wrong, please, staff and colleagues, correct me, of Gaines School, West Broad, Harbin Mathis Road, those tend to be the roads where people are crossing for their, their vehicle and entering a lane. Can you explain a quick fix, not quick fix? Yeah, they were, uh, quick build. How, how would you incorporate a quick build for those, those problematic roads, problematic roads?
Do I take a stab at this, or I can? I guess I'll start. So what, unfortunately, none of those we looked at for the quick builds for this project. I can say for Gaines School Road, we are looking at that for the near miss, for the near miss sensors. What we would typically look at though, when it comes to deploying a quick build, we do bring in our engineers, since we are planners, we can make concepts, but probably not the best. And so we would be looking at what are some of the safety factors we can do quickly? You know, is that bringing out temporary lighting? You know, kind of your stadium lighting, is that bringing out, you know, reducing a lane? Where would you start that? Would you start at the intersection or go all the way down? There's a variety of opportunities. You know, you can see in this picture on the top left, even marking a temporary crosswalk with a temporary pedestrian path. I don't know if that directly answers your question, but.
What I'm trying to get is that I want my colleagues to focus on these roads that are like constantly in the paper for people crossing, people moving into another lane and causing fatalities. Harbin Mathis Road, West Broad, riding, like notorious. So I get the quick builds on these smaller roads, or fancy, you're, but it's just, I mean, we see the fatality after fatality specifically on, particularly on West Broad.
So can I jump in for just a sec? So and, and don't get too caught up on these, you know, two or three projects. This is really just what, some really, really fast things we can do while we still have the ACOM team on hand this year, right? Afterwards, when we have a full plan, you know, remember the map with the, the high injury network, we're gonna be asking you all to consider some, some large capital funding to go towards big improvements, including those, exactly the roads that you've mentioned, and those could still include quick builds, it would just be led by our staff instead of the ACOM team at that.
Okay, thank you.
Do the same exact projects.
Melissa?
Um, yeah, I, West Broad's at the top of my mind too. We got, we've voted on a GDOT proposed improvement plan for West Broad. I'm wondering if we could get that sent back out, I probably haven't. But just understand the overlap between that and what we're learning here.
Yes, so that, that was specifically the, the GDOT Safety Office had identified West Broad as one of their critical networks as well, because it's an on-system, state-maintained roadway. And we were asked to partner with them to help provide some funding, which y'all approved back earlier last year, to, to go along with that project. It's coming up in the next, I think, maybe it's 2027, that would be it's almost a continuation of the work that they're doing right now out toward the mall. But this would be additional lighting, there's like no street lighting on that portion of West Broad, and then building out a, a multi-use path as well.
Yeah, and there was a medians as well.
Hardened, hardened raised medians as well.
So what I'm understanding and looking at these, you know, these, these networks and, and the intersections, it, it seems like a lot of them are intersections where you have a hill or a curve. You're coming at, down a hill or coming out of a curve, and, and that's my big pet peeve is I feel like our speed limits are inappropriate in some of these areas where you do have curves, and I know the state limits us on our speed limits. But I guess this is for Stephen, I mean, can we evaluate some of these areas? See if we can lower speed limits, and I know that's not a guarantee that people will actually drive safely, but at least the limits will there, are there, and we remind people. I know myself, I am like, I drive like a grain, but I do might find myself going over the speed limit, and when I crest a hill and all of a sudden I'm going 10 miles over the speed limit because gravity.
It's definitely part of the solution, it's a reminder of how fast you should be going. If people watch those signs, and we, every three years, we have the opportunity to ask for the DOT for, you know, changes to their speed limits. But I will point out, in the same sentence, I will always say that an engineered on-the-ground solution will slow people more than.
I know, and I know those are expensive and take time to install, but I feel like just changing the speed limit could help a little. I'm thinking of MLK, Newton Bridge, even Chase Street, like I feel like the, the speed limit on Chase Street where you're hitting those interfaces with the loop is 40 miles per hour. We did get it lowered coming into the neighborhood, but it's just as dangerous that way.
There's a variety of things that we, of course, we can look at, you know, recommending a reduce, a reduction in speed limits, but that isn't the only thing, and typically you want to combine a bunch to get the results. So, you know, thinking of curves or hills at, at an, approaching an intersection, we can always say recommend an advanced signal, so that when you're cresting that hill, you already know, oh, I know the thing is yellow, right?
Yeah, but I do.
This, you know, works not, you know, maybe not in perpetuity, but definitely for a while when you're narrowing, narrowing lanes, you know, making folks, giving visual cues to make it a little more uncomfortable to drive 40 miles an hour. Of course, if they're doing it for decades, you know, it might.
Well, and that's another thing, like I've, I've, if we have speed limits that actually are the appropriate road, our officers have better tools for enforcement. I mean, there are people out there who are just driving like assholes, that's, they are, I'll just say it.
Well, this, this is a kind of a, I guess, a bit of an informational piece, but the, the Federal Highway Administration created something called the roadway design hierarchy for safe speeds and safe roads. And it, it basically says that each types of, of improvements you can do to roads to make them safer are one of four kinds. There's, there's removing severe barriers, which also includes separating users. So that's, that's one time. Another is, is just reducing speeds, because there's a recognition, you know, as the slides illustrated pretty clearly, speed kills, right? Another is, is separating users in, in temporally, so in time, so having phased signals, having things like pedestrian hybrid, you get to provide a stop signal for, for people to cross. And then, and then the last one is just building awareness, so that would be signage, striping, changing the, you know, changing the, the environment that people see and hear, that kind of. That kind of thing. So those are, usually it takes all four. Sometimes we will just address those type four first because they can be done quickly. But sometimes you want to be doing things that are addressing multiple of these tiers at the same time. And understanding all of the different types of countermeasures you can do from that perspective. Make sure you're thinking about it each step of the way. And we illustrate those tiers in our countermeasure toolbox pretty clearly as well. So it'll be in there as well. Yeah.
Carol Lefitum's got it.
Couple of questions. One, this is, this study is all from a federal grant that we received, right? Just wanted to emphasize that. Two, um, kind of ties into, no, actually two is a data thing. Can we get the FSI data on loop so that I, you know, because for those, do we have that? How many fatal and serious accidents have been on, on the loop, the bypass around the town?
Yeah, we certainly have that.
Yeah. I, I mean, I would just like to know that because for the, you know, for the, for the majority, for most people in Athens, they're not going like, oh, well. You know, if we're talking about data, I'd like to have the complete data for them and then the ones that we're control of and control over. Also, I think this is interesting in terms of our T S P L S discussion and where we're going. Because as you know, when we go through here, these FSI fatal and serious injuries are not on residential roads. Where we do have some pre-designated funds. And if I look at the money that we have on the pre-designated, none of those are for these kind of major roads. I mean, there's pavement that's, there's not intersection money in there. And I'm wondering when we have this discussion, I'm putting a lot on this discussion at the work session and down the line of the candidate projects listed, if there's another way of, just like we put an asterisk for whether or not it's a tad area. Could we put like a, a, you know, a double asterisk if it's something that would be connected to this? And also if this is something that we want to somehow have some money in our T S P L S to do. And, and all these recommendations are coming out after we put this list together. But there are, would be an opportunity to create a, you know, any safe streets and roads for all buckets somewhere in there.
And the T S P L S 26 list does have.
Vision zero is a candidate project.
That's safer.
Vision zero, there's a line item.
There's a vision. Okay. So that, that would be that. So there's $6 million for that. That's great. But anyway. Okay. Put the high, put the two asterisks on that. But if there are other roads on here that also fall into that category, I think that's important to know. Because just where the, the more dangerous accidents are happening.
Really good points.
That was the last thing they got on the list. So.
Again, I think, um, thinking things through holistically, especially with T S P L S. As where it's at now, it's, it's really great. Still glad that Charlotte looking at 106 plus. Anyway, but I do think for all of the other areas, I'm assuming this is going to be like more of a pilot. And that could be modified to everybody's or other districts. So, um, but the speed limit on Danielsville Road, I think it's 55.
55?
I think it's 55. 55 on a curvy road with no lights and only two lanes. We've had two fatalities there. So, um, that, that's important. The Harvey Mathis is another, um, in my district that is a very, very high incident area. But we just, I saw maybe a year ago when I was working with the former county manager, didn't G dot agree?
To do an R, that R cut intersection?
That R, what, what do you call it?
It's called an R cut. It prevents people from making left turns and it only allows right turns.
R cut. So has that been installed?
Yes.
Okay. So we are looking at, we have taken in consideration Harvey Mathis that, um, Commissioner Davenport. But I think that speed limit on a 290 highway and no lights is another accident that happened. And I do agree that, um, Atlanta Highway Hawthorne is a very, I don't know how many fatalities and hits we've had there. So I do agree with you there.
And G dot recognized that.
Thank you. I wanted to ask for the county countermeasures when you deploy those in the various areas, depending on your, for your pilot. If it's in our district, can you let us know? Like by district, if it's, just if we're aware of, we get calls like, wow, all of a sudden are there new big lights? You know, like just when I'm coming around, you know, I, I want to answer. That's all.
Sure. Yes. We're still finalizing where we will have the quick builds. But yes, we will work with Stephen to make sure that y'all are notified if they're in the area. And then for the safety countermeasures, just to, to point out, so we'll be providing a myriad of recommendations out of this plan with the safety countermeasures and what roads, you know, they can fit on. You know, would it be an arterial? Okay. An arterial is Lexington Road, right? So we'll be providing that. We won't be implementing it, of course, but there's of course another round of, of SS4A funding for implementation and other funding mechanisms.
Have one more. Could you tell me where does it land to how we start officially and where does it, does it end? Like where that 78 is the coverage for what this.
The section that, that G dot's doing or the, or just in general?
Just in general. And I guess in the future, like what would be covered like under, like for our future considerations?
Sure. Really, in a number of different ways, it's the entire length from 78 all the way into town. The portion that G dot's looking at for the safety project is from Eps Bridge to where the new roundabout is going to be at Hancock. But then they have additional projects that they're doing out closer to the mall as well, which you've seen them sort of starting as well. But anything on, I mean, if you look at the high injury network, it's, it's identified that at higher corridor. So all future projects with our, with our money would be tackling any, any part of that. And I did want to bring up, I think Courtney mentioned that implementation grant. So we, we did get a million dollar grant for this, you know, planning and master planning effort. But what the government has told us is once we've completed and approved or adopted a plan, then we can go out after actual construction money. And those can be grants upwards of 30 million, 35 million.
Can we find out tomorrow?
I'm, I'm thinking spring, summer, next year, when, you know, once we, y'all have approved this plan, we're coming right back immediately to put out a grant application for implementation.
We don't know the timing of that yet, but that should be announced sometime early next year.
Yeah, I have just, this is a, a comment and a question. So I noticed that right in front of the Chicklay on Atlanta Highway, right across from Publics. Like that area is a hard getting, hard to get out of area. And there's, you know, there's a lot of fender benders, not necessarily with fatalities. And I just wanted to note that if that fender bender type minor stuff gets captured too. But also I wanted to ask another separate question. And looking at the last page of the baseline action analysis, I'm sorry, crash analysis. We're near.
Oh, yes, here we go.
There's the 45 mile per hour column is 31% of the crashes. And I was curious what the correlation, what you thought the correlation to that was 31% of the accidents versus the speed increasing 50 to 50% and the crash goes down.
So that's generally, it's very, has very much to do with design. So those, those, those 40 to 50 mile per hour roads tend to be, not to call out, just picking on G dot, but tend to be those, those types of roadways that were designed for, designed for, for, you know, maximizing efficiency and speed without really taking them out of the context of being urban roadways necessarily. And so they tend to provide some of the most problematic situations. And that, and I said, not to pick on G dot because that is an Athens problem too. I mean, again, as I mentioned, 59% of the high injury network is on, is on ACC owned and managed roadways. It is, you know, there's, there's, there's a big chunk that ACC can.
There is this healthy balance of land use and transportation. And if you go too far one way, you know, you have overbuilt your land use, your transportation suffers. If you overbuild your transportation, your land use suffers. So trying to find that. Thank you. Nice on questions.
I'm just gonna tell you, this is pretty common too. What we see here, this, this sort of trend, like this is not, I mean, we're, we're working on these all over the country. I can tell you that that, that kind of, that kind of, you know, trend is pretty common.
Yeah. Just as local illustrations, you know, two different corners, you have the exact same roadway design. Where Eps Bridge dies into Atlanta Highway as you do in front of the cookout by the H D Edwards complex. Similarly, you have the very same roadway design where the fuel farm is on Jefferson Highway a, as you do in by Bishop Park. So, you know, just as, as we've grown in population, you have more people moving around, going to get groceries, picking up kids. You know, we've not adapted our roadways to, to be safer.
I mean, I, I just wanted to comment on the land use thing, you know, those G dot roads were designed to become those multi-lane highways decades ago when our population was traction of what it is. And there wasn't a whole lot of development in those areas. And now that there is, and now that we're looking at a land use plan that calls for more residential development intensification in these nodal areas. We're likely to see more fatalities, especially if we're encouraging pedestrian activity. So that's why I feel like it's really important that we, we do focus on those fender bender areas as well. Because we are growing and we are changing our land use. We want to encourage people to not get in their car.
So one of the things that we looked at when we developed this high injury network again, I mentioned this before was risk. And risk on roadways was measured by several factors. One of those was land use. So we did try to understand how crashes occurred within various contexts. It didn't necessarily look at, you know, land use 30 years down the road. We don't have that information. But land use that are, land uses that are current. And we looked at the crash rates based on the different land uses. We also looked at functional classification. We looked at, um, speed and we looked at levels of traffic. And so we took all of that into consideration when we were developing the model for risks. So we were not just looking at where the fatal serious injury crashes occurred. We were also looking at these other elements. And, and we do have all of the property damage only crashes as well. It's just not generally one of the things that's prioritized by this program.
I think that's what this body needs to consider as we move forward with our land use plan. Always keeping in mind this information is relevant.
Just a quick question on, do, can we get data on the times of when we have our H and I and our rate of crashes? H and I's? Yeah.
So we.
Is it mostly at night, day?
Uh, we, I don't have those statistics in front of us, but we do have them. So we can certainly give them to you. We looked at days of the week. We looked at, uh, you know, the weather, whether it was rainy and sunny, I would say a lot of, in rainy conditions like you would think. We did also look at time of day. So we can definitely get that.
I will say the majority, I'm sorry.
Off the top of your head, what's?
A majority were in daylight and clear weather conditions. I'm gonna drop my hands down. There's no question there.
But I also think you have to think in mind, you know, there's the volumes on the roadway at that time. More people are driving during the day than they are in the evening. So.
And more traffic means more exposure. Thanks for your work. I appreciate it. Courtney, Brian, thanks, Stephen. We'll be looking forward to some next steps. Sure. All right. Well, so from one, one kind of emergency management to another, we have an update on our local emergency operations plan from Fire Emergency Services Chief Nate Moss.
Hey, everyone. So I want to make quick introductions for those that want to put a face with the name. This is Meredith Barnum. She is our E and B coordinator. She's also the author of this local emergency operations plan update, as well as our previous two plans that we've just had you all adopt in the past year. She does great work and I didn't probably have communicated with her in some fashion or, or another, but I wanted to make sure you put a face with the name. Moving forward, she will be able to explain to you all the reason we have this update, uh, why it's kind of over. A little bit, I can speak to a little history of what I know. But in front of you, I don't expect you to necessarily digest it all, but we have printed, um, local emergency operations plan as well as all of the annexes for like severe weather and stuff. Those are the parts that you probably would keep in on more so than the actual plan itself. Plans are kind of for those that are doing the work, so to speak, not necessarily something that you really have to dive too far into. But feel free to take them with you just so you've been familiarized yourself with them, with the plan. Hopefully, if this is adopted, just to put this on our website as well as our other plans for just the use of the public. But I'll turn it over to Meredith and let her take over.
Thank you, Chief. Great. I'm here to talk about our local emergency operations plan update. So just to start off with some purpose, today we're going to talk about the historical background and the current condition of the local emergency operations plan. What it will look like in future. Explain the, explain the components and then talk about the planning process that brought us to this lovely reading material that you have in front of you today. Just a quick note on how this feeds into emergency management as a whole. The LEOP is not only legally required, but a key component for the county to build its preparedness and its response protocol off of. So the LEOP is just one of the things that stands up the overall mission of ACC emergency management. On a simplified level, the emergency operations plan or LEOP, or sometimes even EOP, depending who you talk to, outlines the management and the coordination of resources and personnel. On a more nitty gritty level, it defines the procedures in individual departments and makes sure that they align with the statewide expectations. It establishes individual policies on how these interdepartmental agencies work with external agencies. And then it provides a foundation and a guidebook for how we structure training and exercises over the next five years. So here's that history piece. So I mentioned earlier that LEOP is a legal requirement. GMA requires an agency to have an LEOP every five years. They require it to be adopted and submitted on a five-year basis. GMA does this based on some state legislature and based on FEMA responsibilities as well. So while the FEMA responsibility might change in the future, GMA will not be changing this. So it is required for us to receive any kinds of funding if we have a declared disaster. And it's just generally best practice. The last LEOP that was adopted by ACC and submitted to GMA is dated February of 2013. So we are slightly out of compliance right now.
Just, just to clarify, we, we obviously can still operate under an older plan. However, it's not good practice, obviously, for us to have done that. And we believe COVID years may have somehow contributed to our own internal lack of being able to update, but also with GMA. So we obviously are, like you said, slightly beyond slightly, we are in need to update this for sure.
Yes. So efforts to basically start over with the LEOP. We didn't even really bother editing the past version. We just started with a brand new slate. So efforts for this began pretty much immediately once the shelter plan was adopted, uh, last November, last fall, when things started. So then planning meetings were the first step toward that. And later on, you'll see a slide about all of our attendees. But we made sure to include federal, state and local agencies from the government level, and then also all of our wonderful partners in the area. And the process took around five months of planning. So this plan is broken into two pieces. The base plan, which is the front of the plan, it'll be a lot of very standard language. But the real individuality comes into those annexes. So the annexes outlines the emergency support functions or ESF responsibilities. And that's where it gets broken down into individual functions of a disaster. And then the planning, uh, group also elected to include three specific annexes for specific incidents. So flood incidents, severe weather and winter weather. And that also follows what the state does. They include incident specific annexes as well. So we kind of followed their lead on that. But flood, severe weather and winter, based on the hazards that are most present for our area. This is all of our planning team. We included, I think, pretty much every department in Athens Park. And state entities, including our nonprofits, and then our individual departments of public health, Georgia State Defense Corps, just to name a few. Community members like the Division of Family and Children's Services. Our University of Georgia Health Center was also involved, the university Ares, and then City of Winterfield. So we had a couple of meetings about this. The first was really just getting all of these people in the same room and explaining what the LEOP was, explaining the importance of it and going over what the process would look like. Then we talked about the base plan components, if we had any feedback on that. But meeting three was really when we got into the annexes. And we all actually sat down with copies of the annexes and each individual agency broke up into tables with other partners and redpinned their annexes for how they wanted it to be. And that's a really important step in the process because the LEOP defines a group is responsible for task one, two, three. three. So if your agency hasn't sat down and looked at what you're responsible for, and I tell you in a disaster and you say, we can't do that, that's not quite the time to talk about it. So, uh, we made sure that everyone had an opportunity to give feedback on what they could and they could not do reasonably. A little bit of a real life example, um, how does it actually work in practice? So a disaster, an incident, or planned event would occur. Uh, Chief Mossers designated would determine if there's a need for a response and a scale that's needed. So is this end locally, or do we need to move it up into state and get maybe even federal level response involved? Then he would activate the appropriate emergency support functions based on need. So based on the type of incident or disaster that occurs, he would then pull the appropriate people into the EOC. So those people would start operating within their support functions that are outlined in this local emergency operations plan. So the local emergency operations plan is supposed to act if you have someone who maybe hasn't been in the EOC for previous events, or someone who's relatively new to an agency, they can pick up an annex and they can flip to their emergency support function, and they can say, our agency is responsible for these tasks. Let me get started on it. So this plan will be subject to public record requests. Uh, it doesn't contain blue, blueprints or anything security sensitive. So common practice to have it posted on a website. It'll be distributed to all the agencies which were involved in the planning process. And then, once it's adopted, it will be submitted to GMA for approval.
All right.
Questions?
Okay. Um, is there opportunity to, I was looking at the list of departments. Is there an opportunity to enhance or expand the list of departments? And I'm thinking more community-based organizations and who could we set up those meetings or organizations? I'm, I'm thinking about some of our churches, some of our social groups. So who would I refer or advocate that they get involved in these emergency situations? Who would be that point person?
So.
First of all, is it possible?
So when we talk about ESFs, um, what you'd be referring to for churches is probably like a sheltering or feeding partner, I'm guessing?
I don't know. I'm just saying, whatever the need is, who would, who would be a contact if there was ability to expand that would be listed as your partners? And I'm sure all of your partners do something different or as needed. So as needed, what?
So the partners would be sorted into those ESFs, those resp- those response functions. So we'll take the example of church. Uh, so a church could probably provide shelter and feeding. It's not necessarily that they need to be in the planning meeting for this, or that they need to be in the EOC. But what we would have is, one of my main jobs is community connections. So I would be in ESF six at that point, and I would know this is a great church to call for that. And I would be in the EOC assisting with that. So it's kind of, you have the people that are on the ground doing the great work. And then the emergency support function is just one level above that of who is making sure that people are where they need to be and have the resources they need.
Well, I, you know, I guess after we've had so many storms lately, um, I guess my next question is, is there a local number for residents to call? If a tree fell, because this happened at the last storm, and I just found out about it last week. Someone called Jackson, Jackson EMC and said, they worked for me. And they wanted.
News to you.
They worked for me and I needed to know when they're going to come and cut down trees, clear this room. So, but do we have a number? I don't think, maybe calling Jackson EMC may be beneficial from resident to Jackson for power. That might be. But do we have a number that they could call local government and you be the Jackson EMC contact?
So what's generally recommended, and I say generally because everything can change if it's a large-scale disaster. But generally speaking, when we have those thunderstorms that create limbs and stuff like that, we recommend that, um, people call the non-emergency number and report them that way, and then it'll get dispatched how, how it needs to be. Because Jackson EMC or power companies don't always have to be involved. It depends on the circumstance. So reporting through dispatch is the best way. If we do have something like a tornado come through where we're not dealing with just rigs and limbs on the ground, we have a lot more going on, we will in that event set up a hotline where individuals can report debris fields and we can work on clearing streets in a, in a more effective way.
So and the non-emergency number is somewhere in all of this stuff, okay?
And Commissioner Thorntree, I wanted to bring out the communications, um, department has done an amazing job of creating a flyer that's both a, a physical topic, but also on our websites, um, who to call in the event of a certain type of emergency, such as a tree, a tree across an intersection or a power line that has fallen. They, they have those resources readily available. And in the event of a, a, say a hurricane, a planned thing that we know is coming, we make sure that that's published on our website, easily accessible. Um, that way, if someone just goes to ACCgov.com, just to base website for the county, they will see this information. And if there is a hotline already set up, these other, um, specific, uh, situation-specific resources that they need, we have that usually set up in advance. Now for something that may happen as, as far as a summer storm, as Meredith alluded to, you know, sometimes people will call nine-one-one, that's okay. Sometimes they'll call the police non-emergency line, or they may see on the website the same resources that we would refer to, and they may just keep that handy. So they just know who to call in the event of an emergency.
And that goes out before expected events, huh?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. See it on social media.
I want to turn to Jeff Montgomery real quick.
Okay, it's also, we also put that in the front of the ACC from A to Z guides that any of you all distribute to residents that we put out all over. We purposely put that in there as kind of a phone book option as well for if your internet's down or something like that, you can't, can't see.
I do, I want to take personal responsibility for my constituents. And when I'm sending out a newsletter each, you know, I just want to be able to put that in front. Nobody looks at that until the storm happens. So, but I just want to put it out there like that. And so my last question is, and I was glad to see on, I think it was page seventeen in the, um, appendix about homeless and, um, homeless and unhoused folk during these critical times. Who actually coordinates that? And my, and this is another example where I could see churches and nonprofits getting involved. But who is that? Is that you also, Meredith?
Yes.
But Meredith has a lot of responsibility with, you know, internal departments with. She always say not enough. But, but with the internal departments, obviously, in, in, in their community partners, but as well as her own community partners in context, and, and, and the faith-based organizations, the homeless, um, organizations and other, uh, community, um, advocates, they do great work on a, on a twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five basis. And, and Meredith, it's her job to, to get to know them, but it's also for them to be able to approach her about any concerns they may have up to a storm. And just to Chief Moss's point, I remember when Hurricane Helene was approaching, there, there was a flashing bar that was on splash page for the website that would then take you to all those emergency management things. Carol Patrick, Allison, and then any others.
No, but I'm just, this is an obvious, but it's reassuring for me. I found that graphic which just displayed on my Facebook page, but, uh, I still asked about it like ten minutes later. So that shows how soon. But Meredith, so you're the person. When I'm thinking like, who is thinking about everything emergency? Like what other emergencies could there be? Like I can just hand that responsibility over and take it off my head and it's in you, right? That's what you think about? That's your whole thing?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you so much.
For your last name. Barnum, BA.
Patrick Allison, Melissa.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Thornton. I alluded to this, what you did. Break it down for me. When it comes to weather-related incidents, like it's a hundred degrees outside, and the hour local emergency goes into effect where we open up shelters. Um, do we coordinate with people like bigger visions and red chrom?
So that is a component, um, specifically when you're talking about heating and cooling, that's in our shelter plan, which is, um, kind of a nice accessory to our local emergency operations plan. It's an annex. Um, and that brings into our tier system of, based on temperatures, based on floor tests, based on what we're looking at, and then also based on capacity of our existing Salvation Army and bigger vision shelters, how we escalate to continue the shelter.
Yeah. I first got here because we were having temperatures ninety-seven or so. And a couple of you had asked, you know, when, when do people get sheltered? How do they get sheltered? It was actually Meredith that prepared the information that I sent out to you that sort of said, here are the parameters that we use. And when you start hitting those tiers, our role starts increasing. Up until that time, it's kind of the shelters are taking care of it themselves. If it gets to a certain point, then Meredith steps into that role and we start doing some other things. But that was, that was kind of how that unfolded, if you realize it works its way through, but yeah, through the ends.
This leaves your services also work with you guys with the heating and one services?
Yes.
Patrick, anything else?
No. Um, so this is, I have for future consideration, what's to hold up? Right?
Just adoption.
It's, it's coming into your next, next action.
We just wanted to see if there might be any questions. That's why we wanted to provide a work session for you.
Thank you all.
Allison?
Um, Mike, I'm not sure where I saw that great graphic information about who to call for what. Was that maybe in the water bill insert?
We did do it as a water bill insert.
In its entirety, right? It wasn't like where to find. And I, I think that that would be, uh, timely to do again with new people who would just come, yeah, if we make sure we're on a cycle maybe every fall to get that included in its entirety, not with the other things. I mean, it takes a whole page and it's very, it's definitely refrigerator magnet loading.
And that's one of the reasons we decided to also put it in the A to Z guide and do some, some other things, um, with that. Uh, now we only have funding so much to do certain number of incidents each year, but we certainly can look at, at doing that on a somewhat regular basis.
Maybe, maybe you'll put that in the budget for next year that you, that some of us would like to see it happen annually to water bill.
I think in the distant future, Commissioner will be known as the refrigerator magnet generator.
Yeah.
And I should also brag for a second. You'll see this coming up, but that flyer actually won a second place national award just last week.
All right. So let's get a little red ribbon on there. A ribbon, it's a red ribbon on it.
Yeah, Melissa.
Yeah. I mean, I just wanted to say that ACC services is really good about social media updates. Like I'm not on a whole lot, but every time I open up, uh, there's, you know, either a report on a fire or a graphic like this. Um, so I, I'm just building, but I, I'd like to encourage all our constituents to follow them, um, you know, whether you're on Instagram or Facebook or whatever, follow them because you updated and it's a storm coming or in the wake of a storm, they'll tell you what.
Commissioner, you're right. Actually, we have a lot of shares when it comes to those things because when it is timely like that, people, people share it to their loved ones. And we have a lot in this community that, that have helped to spread that message. And sometimes there's questions that are generated by those social media posts for clarification. We want to be able to provide answers on the front end of things. So this provided a great tool for us.
It's also National Preparedness Month this month, so I've been posting.
Yeah. I mean, I appreciate it. I, I've found it to be really helpful. But folks will follow you. I mean, it sounds kind of boring to follow. It's not your latest influencer, but it's really important.
I think it's also important to, Meredith alluded to this, is that, you know, as important as is to have the plan in place, the exercises that follow it are even more important. It should also be a problem and working through. There was one recently I had, and it was at the airport where it was effectively practicing how this would work out if there were an incident at the airport. But you'll see it worked periodically so that you don't run into some things you hear on the news sometimes where an event comes through and no one really quite knows what's supposed to happen. Practicing is, um, is really critical. And that's another, um, another part of what they'll contribute to.
It's great relationship building to train with those community partners that we meet with. What are your capabilities? And when we see them exercise those capabilities, it really helps us to reaffirm our, our trust in them, as well as their trust in us to be able to take care of our, our, our community in the event of an emergency.
It's kind of off, well, it's about, um, funding. So last year, I remember when we were, there, there was an incident, maybe it was cold, it was either cold or hot. But I know you called Jamie for Sparrows Nest. They weren't open, weren't able to open because they're a nonprofit and they don't have funding for their staff. Is that like an ACC thing? Like we only work with our ACC in like churches. Of course churches got the funding because they get time and offer. But no shade to the churches. But for the Sparrows Nest, I know he couldn't open because they don't have the funding to be able to pay staff. Like I'm asking, is that like a us problem? Should we give Sparrows Nest money in case we need them to open for overflow? Or do we just leave them, you know?
Patrick, are you thinking maybe there'd be like an emergency fund?
It's an overflow. Just, just to be fun. Yeah.
Different counties do it differently. Um, some counties do elect to have partnerships with some of their nonprofits like that. Uh, I know Newton County uses one particular partner that they, um, provide a percentage to assist with warming and cooling. Um, but it's really just a decision to be made on the county level. It's not something that we have to have. We can make do with, uh, our volunteers that we have. Okay. Seven options.
And Commissioner, a little history too, just, just so you know, we, we try to maintain those relationships with faith-based organizations, but sometimes it's a matter of timing or their capabilities at the time. Sometimes if it's around the holidays or if there is severe weather, they're reluctant to bring folks in to maybe manage a shelter or a reinfestation center or something like that. So that is something that we consider. We don't want to put anybody in harm's way to help out. However, you know, sometimes those capabilities sound good as far as intentions, but they may not be able to do it due to timing or other circumstances that they can't control. So we continue to try to keep the lines of communication open with that. So potentially, if there's fu- funding opportunities or, um, something we can do in the planning phases of things, we try to do that for the next event.
Okay.
I have that observation through operational analysis.
Just on that point, um, as a reminder, in the second half of this fiscal year, we'll be conducting an audit of emergency operations. So although it has no bearing on the approval of this plan, questions like that may come about in the audit results as well.
Anything else for Meredith? Chief, yes, Stephanie?
I don't think her question was answered, answered, like in the, because you called the Sparrows Nest, I guess, for an event because you needed them and, and there was a basic response. But I think the question was, could there be funding, maybe like on a reimbursement level? It was, is it, is it us issue? Because they have funding for their, for what they do, but this is, um, additional. And so I guess I would have the same question in addition, like as a reimbursement, like, yes, I didn't get it in their annual allocation for what they, what they, um, applied for, yeah, yeah, what they applied for the normal operations, but this is in addition to that. And they are, they're willing to help and they can help. And we call them, um, is there reimbursement process or is there, could that be folded into it?
It doesn't currently exist, but it is possible to enter an MOU with a reimbursement process like that.
That would be part of kind of your annual budgeting process and other things, do we have those kinds of dollars identified? If it were something that rose to a federal declaration or something, then that we would look at, obviously securing reimbursement for ourselves to cover some of those expenses.
Again, that may be something, yeah. As we prepare that by twenty-seven budget, they want to think about, you know, do you want to have fifty or a hundred thousand dollars set aside for those emergent needs?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Meredith, Chief, we really appreciate it. Everybody else, thanks so much. Everybody have a fabulous afternoon.